Welcome, everyone. Good evening. I would like to call the Monday, May eighth, uh, school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Uh, Director W. Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Lala Bertie.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
T. Felton.
Here.
And Chair Rash.
Here.
That's six presents.
Excellent. And if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, couple business before we get to our guests here. Um, I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as, uh, the committee of the whole meeting from N minutes from April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None? With that, the motion carries. And we get to the most exciting part of our night. We have some guests who get to be, um, at the very top of our meeting. Uh, Lincoln Center, fifth grade science club teacher, Emily Mulnier.
Molinar.
Molinar, oh! I apologize.
Don't worry.
Um, to bring in some scientists to talk about their science club experience. Come on up.
All right, where do I stand?
You get to stand right at center.
Okay, perfect.
And your guests can come up there with you.
Okay, come on up, you guys. You guys can just make a line here so we can be in the mics. Perfect. So my slides, I think I have some slides that I'm gonna go through and then we'll stop and talk through those. Okay, so this is the Lincoln Center Science Club, and these are just a few members. You can click on to the next slide. And I have lots of different pictures in here because the smiles just say how much kids enjoyed it. Okay, next slide. Um, so who, we had sixty students, grade three through five, so two sessions, actually. Uh, Tuesdays or Wednesdays, March through April, April, and we explored science. So that's us. And actually, we had, I think, over a hundred and fifty kids that applied that wanted to be part of it. So we added a session and added, um, I was just gonna take twenty kids per day, and I took, um, thirty. And why? Um, well, we wanted to grow Lincoln Center's young scientists, and we did that. Um, and we helped kids engage with science in new ways. And this is a picture of a student looking at a bird book while we were looking at birds. Okay, next. Okay, before we do this, I want you guys to share your favorite part about science club. If you could say your name and what grade you're in, and then what your favorite activity was. Are you okay going first? Okay. Cory, here.
My name is, my name is Quinn, and my favorite activity in science club was probably when we got to make the oobleck.
Do you wanna explain what oobleck is?
Um, oobleck is like a store, it's kind of like a slime, kind of like a substance, that when you hit it hard, it doesn't make a dent in it, but when you hit it really gentle, it makes a dent to it.
So we were talking about different states of matter. It's a non-Newton, Newtonian fluid, so it doesn't fit into any of them. So that was fun, and we made a big mess, didn't we? Okay, you can go to the back. Yuraya, come on up. Your name and your grade and what your favorite thing was.
My name is Yuraya, and I'm in third grade, and my favorite part of science club was probably the bottle flipping activity.
So do you wanna explain what we did that was different with that? Like with our bottle, bottle flipping, or do you want me to explain that? Oh. So we can hear you. Perfect. There we go. Um, so we did, like, what amount of water in the water bottle would make it flip best? And it turned out to be, how much was it? Was it one-third? One-third, so only a third of water in the bottle, um, got us the most.
Are you an expert bottle flipper now?
No.
No, no. That's honest.
My name is Juju, and my favorite part of science club was, uh, hearing the different sounds frogs make. So it played, it played sounds of different frogs, and we'd have to find out which ones they were, and which frog was making the noise.
Ooh, awesome.
Interesting.
And Juju's in fifth grade.
Awesome.
Uh, my name is Sophie, I'm in fifth grade, and I like doing the frog one, too.
Mm-hmm. That one was fun.
My name is Ava, and I also enjoyed the oobleck, and it was a mess.
Then I helped Vino. Yes, you did.
You did after.
And I'm the teacher, and I liked it all. Um, okay, so we can go back to our slides quickly. And basically, what we have is we're gonna do a STEM activity because why should we have all the fun? So the kids are actually gonna join you up there.
Awesome.
And you're gonna do a STEM activity with them. They're the experts, cuz they're the scientists, but we're gonna save Fred. So Fred is a gummy worm, and he decided he didn't wanna live underground anymore, and he wanted to go explore the world. And he decided he was gonna go, uh, whitewater rafting, but his raft tipped over. So we have, so we're modifying this a little bit, but you're going to have to take Fred, your gummy worm, and you need to get him in a life vest, or in a, in a ring. Well, some of these are, let's see here. You gotta get him in a ring, only using paper clips to touch the gummy worm and the gummy, uh, ring. Now, remember, we want Fred to live, so we're not gonna stab him with the paper clips. And these are supposed to be filled with air, so we're also not going to stick the paper clips in here. Okay, I know. And I have candy for all afterwards. Okay, so what I'm gonna have you do, and we'll kind of do this timed, we'll just see how far we get. Um, Ava, I'm gonna have you go between these two, and I'll bring you your supplies in a minute, between Wendy and Tip. And then, Ava, will you go between Monica? Oh, Sophie. The twins got me. I did it three times today. So Monica and John. And then Juju, will you go between Nikki and Ann? And then, would you guys be willing to be with Mr. Zambrino? Two of you together with him?
Superintendent, superintendent gets a little extra.
Super treatment, I guess, here, wow.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you your supplies, and then I'll set the, here's two paper clips.
Um, I did it last year, and we did it, I think.
So no stabbing is what I heard. No stabbing.
Okay, okay.
But you have to pull the paper clips apart.
So you've done this before?
Uh, Juju, will you pass out the gummy worms one for each?
We have to get the preserver on the worm, right? Using these.
You don't wanna tell me, right? We gotta figure this out, you don't know.
Okay, there's that, and you have the worms coming, Juju's my helper. Okay, don't start yet.
We gotta get this around that.
All right.
Only touching both with the paper clip. Oh, could we?
You can bend these.
Oh, okay, can you stretch that a little bit?
Ready, set, go! We have a clarifying question. Clarifying question. Does it have to go through or around? It should go through. Okay.
So, how stretchy are these?
Stretch it open.
They're really stretchy. Like tweezer it apart? Think that might work?
We can't touch, oh, so if we're using both paper clips? Can't touch the worm.
Wait, is we could probably like break them apart?
Yeah, we don't wanna poke it, or it'll sink.
They don't have to stay like a paper. We're gonna expand them.
Kids, so there. What if I break them?
So we could use it like tweezers?
Maybe can you stretch it out?
Injured worm. So if I tweezer the worm?
We have to stretch this out further.
What do you need to do with the lifesaver?
What if we?
We're supposed to smile? Right? There you go. Oh, it's right there.
All right, you hooked it, oh, boy. We're in trouble.
Is it gonna come out? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Good stretch. A little bit, yeah.
Wanna try to push that through?
Now we've got a chance, right?
If I can touch them.
Like a grasper?
Yeah, it is.
Pick it up and. Top sticks and just push that thing down.
Yeah, cuz I need to get it.
Let's see.
How can you? So, how come? Oh, I think it's a little hope through.
We're trying, and we didn't, we're trying, but we didn't do a very good job of it.
There we go.
Oh, we're in good shape. Maybe we can use. Oh, my life preservers in a lot of trouble.
Okay. So then. Do you wanna use yours as a worm tweezer?
All right.
Is that one out?
Go down into it and try to.
I need a third paper.
Stands if you want to, right?
Okay, I have an idea. So we're gonna stretch, and then the other person?
Oh, yeah, you can set it on top and then stretch it.
Yes.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna, ah, open your nose.
Here, how about?
Can we get a third paper clip?
Can you?
Yeah, you can do that.
Thank you. So now we're gonna stretch. We're gonna make a area, you guys can have a third paper clip. We'll stretch, and you put.
How will you bullet do this?
I heard that you really like.
We were so very.
Weekend, I was out in the woods, and I heard so many spring flapper frogs. Oh, we're close.
I like that.
Okay.
Push it through.
Yeah, do you wanna try that?
Push it through, yep.
I'm pretty sure that's what the gavel's for, right?
Go inside there.
Yep, there we go.
Open it all up.
Open it up again, yep. Open it up again.
Okay.
Put his tail through, interesting.
Yeah.
Then his hook.
Yeah, cuz his tail is gonna. Yeah. So why don't we get our worm?
We had a good idea.
I think we have it.
We have a big problem. I think we gotta go like this. Can't use props.
Wait, uh, Quinn, can you hold that like this?
It's coming, it's coming.
Almost.
I think we need to make this a bit bigger.
Yeah, cuz I think if we. If we can.
Grab it and kind of hold it, and then I'll push again. If you can hold it there, can you hold them there?
If we can both hold. I can maybe make it.
Now push this back down.
We're in so much trouble here.
Life preserver the other way.
I'll do the other side.
You got his.
So like if one person wants it on this side? Then you can pull it through on the other side.
Okay, you got it?
Or his, his tail's floating.
Two people have to be holding the red side at the same time. See if we can get him.
There it is, but.
We just pinch, pinch the tail.
See if I can make it bigger.
Okay, we got the first one.
Oh, come on! Did you win down there?
We would keep on going longer and longer and longer, but just for time's sake.
For the record, the team with the doctor did really well down there. I suppose, he is good at instruments down there.
There's so much similarity.
I think I can do two ideas.
And a lot of creative ideas. Scientists, will you gather your stuff and give it to me?
We did our best, right? That's all you can ask yourself.
Get your gummy worm and your paper. Scientists, junior scientists, come here. Ava, will you grab your paper clips, too? Thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you for your help.
Couldn't have done it without you.
And I have just a little bit more. Will you guys still stand with me, so I don't have to stand by myself? Thanks. Okay, so a little bit more on the slides, and then we should be good. Thanks. So, I know this is a classic quote, a picture is worth a thousand words, but I would just wanted to share these with you cuz they really speak volumes. And you get to see more faces.
Is that great? No.
Uh, yeah, and these are just kids exploring science, doing a lot of different activities. Thank you so much. Thanks for your support. I know the students got all theirs, but I do see some other junior, junior scientists in the room. If you guys would like. Do you guys want some band, like wristbands? Sure?
The wristband?
Yeah, come on up. Gotta give some bonus if you attended a school board meeting on your Monday night, right?
Emily, thank you so much. That was a lot of fun.
Well, and that's what science club was the whole time, so thanks for your support.
Absolutely. So fun.
Got one more?
Oh.
What I was wondering where that was.
Yeah, I think they've earned it.
No, I'm.
Oh, I'll have a gummy worm. Who didn't get one? Someone not get one? I'll take a gummy worm, Tim. Thank you. There you go.
Thank you. It's right for her.
Do we have more in the bucket?
You want this?
There you go.
Thanks so much for coming in. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much for coming. Always one of the most fun parts of our, uh, board meetings. Rarely do we get to do little science experiments.
We'll bring some over to her room, and then that way she'll have.
For the other kids. Yeah, I got a.
All right. We will continue on with the report section of our night. Um, a couple of us board members were here for public listening session. Um, we did not have any, uh, one come in for public listening session, which you could always do. Uh, the second first meeting of, uh, the month. You could come, uh, here at four fifteen or submit, uh, public listening directly through our website. Um, I will turn it over to Vice Chair Weber for our committee of the whole, um, report from the meeting that we had just prior to our school board meeting. But I will say we aren't quite done. We have a lot to get through today, so.
So one of our main issues was we did a community survey, um, talking to, um, both, um, parents of students who, um, live in our community and go to our schools, and then parents who come to our schools from outside our community, and just asking them, what do they think our strengths are in the district? Um, what are their main concerns? Uh, what types of programs do they like to see? Why do they like coming to South St. Paul schools? Um, and it was, it was a lot of information. People were, um, very generous with their time in providing information, um, about our community. And then we also did a survey with, um, parents who, um, students could go to schools in our community and choose not to, and what are their reasons for, um, coming and going. So it was a lot of great, a lot of great information.
Excellent. And now we'll turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Zambrino for some highlights from around the district.
All right, well, thank you, Chair Rash. Always lots of great things going on in a wonderful school district like ours. I'll start by, uh, call, shout out. So this week is, uh, the National Teacher Appreciation Week. And of course, while we super much appreciate our teachers, we also take the time to, to recognize all of our staff. And you know, I, um, I said this just over a year ago when I interviewed schools, and school districts are not made up of bricks and mortar, they're made of people. And it's the people in our district that make it what it is. It's our staff who go above and beyond, whether it's in the classrooms or in the offices, the hallways, feeding our kids, getting them back and forth to school, all the myriad of jobs that our staff do, uh, to make this all come together, day in and day out. I think it's easy to take for granted what it takes to just make it all happen, but it does take a village. I know that's, uh, kind of a cliche, but it, it rings true here in South St. Paul. We have amazing staff. So just a big, uh, shout out to them for everything they do to keep our kids safe, nurtured, learning. Um, it's amazing, so thank you to our staff. Uh, also, something to celebrate is our graduation rate. So it's kind of on a lag, so when we talk graduation rates, it's kind of funny to think we just got our graduation rates from last spring, but that's how, uh, how it's calculated out. But these are our four-year graduation rates, and we saw a five and a half percentage point increase in the last year. So we went, um, from eighty-four point four to eighty-nine point nine as our graduation rate, and, um, that is above where we were again last year and even pre-pandemic. So we were at eighty-eight point six, so we're up one point three percentage points from prior to the pandemic, and definitely above the state. The state is at eighty-three point six. So again, I just mentioned our amazing staff, and I think the proof is in the pudding. And so it's amazing to see what they were able to do. Some things that we, we, you know, talking to the high school, talking to Principal Chocky, his team, I think the bar program has really helped, uh, focus in on individual student needs. And of course, when Wednesday has, uh, tailored that day towards giving kids extension and opportunity, but also making sure kids are caught up. So kudos to all of our staff. I will also say, when I talk to Chuck, Principal Chocky, he always says, uh, graduation is really the result of the work throughout the entire district. So he's always clear that that's not just the high school staff that contributed to that. So I wanna bring that voice into here, knowing that he's, uh, very vocal about that. So thank you to our staff for that, uh, great work. Hard to believe, we've talked about this now for a few meetings, but we're coming right up on summer learning. So wanna make sure everyone knows, you can hop on our website and get enrolled. We have opportunities for students in grades one through five, seven and eight, and then lots of transition programming. So kindergarten camp for incoming kinders, Packer preview for sixth grade, and Packer prep for incoming ninth graders. Uh, if you have any questions about that, you can certainly reach out to the school. But, uh, as a reminder, we're always looking at summer being, going into the grade for next year. So not current grade level, but next year's grade level. Um, this time of year, we mentioned recognizing our staff. There's a lot that goes on around also recognize our students. So last, uh, Friday, I was there, it was great to celebrate eleventh and twelfth graders for academic honors. Uh, there are many categories that they were acknowledged for, but we had, uh, NHS is one of our terms we hear a lot in education, but that's National Honor Society. So we were able to, to celebrate and honor the twenty-two National Honor Society, twenty-twenty-two, as well as new twenty-twenty-three. We had a number of students in the picture there with the ribbons on, our IB diploma candidates. So those are students who are working towards the full IB diploma. We celebrated IB honors, bilingual seal, which I think is a nice thing that Minnesota has added to acknowledge students who bring more than one language to the table. So we often think about students who have to learn English, that that might be a deficit when we all really know it's an asset. So great for students who are adding a new language, whether that's English or, or another foreign language. Um, along the lines of celebration, we also had our athletics and activities awards last week. And so probably too many categories to list there, but ninety-two seniors received letters, and, um, we had partners from the VFW there to celebrate a boy and a girl each, uh, for an athletic award, as well as, um, participating in activities. Celebrated students who maintained, uh, three point six five GPA all the way through their high schooling. I just, so great to see so many kids and the efforts that they're making and, and paying it forward here and delivering on the great work of our staff. So thank you to our staff and students for that. Early learning is a pretty important topic. We know that the research is very clear, the importance of getting kids started early, where there's been a lot of conversation at the legislature around funding for early learning, and that's a high priority. And so I know that, uh, Jean Zender and her team, uh, worked really hard to advocate for early learning needs. And so they were at the Capitol advocating for that. So hopefully, we'll see, we have just a few days left on that session, but we know that early learning funding is, is a high priority of ours. Lincoln Center, always working to be inclusive and did a creative thing. So they're supporting, uh, students that need some sensory processing. So they've created what they call a sensory walk. So it's on the hallways, on the floor, and it allows students to, uh, with processing needs to, to work on their sensory skills, uh, but also just kind of fun. So you know, a great opportunity for anybody to practice hand-eye coordination or balance. And that was, uh, provided by our, our partners at the SSP Educational Foundation. So thank you, uh, to them for that. The SUN students, our students with unique needs have been working on, uh, what they call the Sunshine Cafe. I try to go every time, uh, was able to join them there. And the students run a whole store. So you walk in, you place your order, they collect your money, and then they fill your order, and just a really fun event, and the kids take such pride in, in doing that. So thank you to our SUN teachers and staff and students for providing that opportunity. Uh, as I said, we're flying right through spring, May Day. So I love these smiles and, and out making joy around the Capoja neighborhood. So our Capoja kindergartners made May Day baskets and, um, deliver those to homes around the neighborhood. Um, May Day is something that's celebrated to kick off spring, and, um, they bring joy, of course, to the, the neighbors in the neighborhood. So thank you to our staff and students who arranged that. And then last week, our Comunidad de Latinos Unidas hosted a Cinco de Mayo event, and they had a lot of different contests. I wanna make sure I get this one right. So one of the contests was for best dressed La Chilindrina, if I'm saying that correctly, which is a well-known Hispanic character. So pictured here are the winners of the contest. So lots of fun to celebrate the various cultures in our community and appreciate the efforts that went into planning that. Uh, as always, you can follow us on social media, whatever format you, uh, like. We've got it available, we do our best to keep things updated. Couple important dates, May thirtieth is already coming up here on Memorial Day, and then June eighth is our last day of school. So flying along. Our board is always busy, so if you wanna find out what the board is doing, materials are available online at our website. So anytime, hop on, you can watch videos, review materials, it's all, um, public. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Zambrino.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have our consent agenda items. They are typically financial claims, staffing, personnel, and nature, um, and are a part of our board package and not a part of regular discussion at our board meeting. Uh, most of these have already been discussed and explained, um, as we go forward. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion on our consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we have no policies under review at this time. Our policy committee is actually meeting next week, um, start going through regular cycle of review of some other items within our policy. Um, so then we move on to our business items. Um, and before we go on to business items, we've had some news within our community. Um, uh, one of our board members, Bernie Bierman, uh, has passed away, uh, just in this last week. Um, as a new board, we were just getting to know Bernie. Uh, been working with him over the last four months. Um, and Bernie was working really hard to be a great board member. And I had many sort of regularly scheduled, um, Friday phone calls with Bernie as we worked through. Um, he would have been the first to sort of admit, um, technology and email was not his strong suit, and he was learning, um, new skills even, um, at his age, and, um, really cared about the work and really cared about the community that he, um, felt really honored to serve in the last four months of his life. And, um, we certainly are going to miss, uh, Mr. Bierman, um, and really applaud and thank, uh, the service that he was able to provide, um, for the community all the way through the end. And, um, it meant a lot to us, meant a lot to the community. Um, and I know he was really proud of it, um, the work that he got to do with us. And, um, cut short, so, um, with that tonight, um, we are looking for approval, um, for the South St. Paul, um, school board to approve a resolution declaring a school board vacancy. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Resolution, I apologize. Uh, Lisa, will you please call the roll for the resolution?
I apologize, we, we were just talking process, just to make sure people understand. So we will be appointing. So one part of the process, we have, um, statute kind of lays out the, the process, and because of the timing, it kind of depends on when things happen. I do wanna reiterate what you said, I really enjoyed working with Bernie. He was, uh, leaning in, I got to talk to, uh, one of his sons and talked about how he was helping him with technology. And he said, you know, first I had to kind of help him walking through it, then he had it, and then he completely had it. So you know, I think, talk about modeling lifelong, learning to jump into that and, and lean into that. But process-wise, we do by statute need to make an appointment because, uh, it's too far out to the next election cycle. So we will have an election for the permanent replacement in November. Uh, but process-wise, we do need to make an appointment. And so we will have that on our website, anyone who's interested can apply. And then the school board, you all, will review and, and decide who will take that seat. Probably will take us through about July, we're thinking about process, which we'll talk about We're thinking about process, which we'll talk about a little later here after, um, after the meeting. And then we'll get that person in, they'll stay through November. We have the election, and my understanding is as soon as the election is certified, the following meeting, then the new, uh, candidate will take over. So just process-wise, wanna share that and then just share some of my sentiments about enjoying working with Bernie. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Lisa, will you call and roll vote?
Director Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Birdie?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
And Chair Roche?
Yes.
That is six yeas.
And motion carries. Alright. Uh, our next business item, I am, uh, looking for a motion to, uh, for approval for South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution placing Jesse Rock on unrequested leave of absence. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
And I turn it over to, uh, Joel Miltier for discussion.
Thanks. On April tenth, twenty-twenty-three, the board approved a resolution proposing to place one teacher, a science teacher in our district on an unrequested leave of absence for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And tonight, we bring forward the placement of that teacher. He had fourteen days to request a hearing with the board. Those fourteen days have passed, and no hearing was requested. Therefore, we move to the next step in the process, which is actual placement on unrequested leave of absence for the following school year.
Any questions or discussion? Okay. Um, just wanna express my sentiment, what a remarkable teacher he is. This is in no way a reflection of, uh, that at all.
Sorry.
Alright, uh, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director Lala Birdie?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
And Chair Roche?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Motion carries. Um, last business item for the night. Looking for, uh, South St. Paul School Board to approve, uh, the preliminary field trip request for the secondary building French class to travel to France during spring break of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
And I will turn discussion over to Brian Zambrino.
Yeah, thank you. Always fun to have kids get those real-world experiences and get out and see the world. I know we had, um, some fun travels over this last spring break for a number of our students. Per our board policy, though, that it does require you all to, to vote. So most field trips, if they're in town, the principals can sign off. If they're kind of going a little further or out of state kind of things, then that comes to my desk. And for an out of country, it's up to you all. So you can always say they have to bring the superintendent as part of the requirements, if you wanna do that, but...
Well, full disclosure, I actually attended this meeting as there is a French student in my household who is very excited about the possibility of this. Alright, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wee.
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 Me madam, wee wee.
With style. Uh, any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Excellent. Alright. Um, that brings us towards the end of our meeting. Uh, this is for board member reports. Uh, where board members will provide a brief report from perhaps some of their committee work or events that they have participated in, or some of the passion that they have seen around our district. And if I can start with, um, Director Wendy Felton.
Okay. First thing, of course, I'd like to express my true sympathy to, to Bernie Beerman's family. I actually grew up only four houses away from Mr. Beerman, down on the south end of South St. Paul. So knew him, knew his family way back in the early sixties, when, when he lived just four houses away from me. And also, it's been kind, it's a, it's a busy time of year for, for a lot of events. I attended the Activities Athletics, uh, Awards Meeting last week, which is, which is always wonderful to see all the students there. And then also, this coming Wednesday will be the Educational Foundation banquet held at the secondary building, where the foundation is giving over four hundred thousand dollars away in scholarships to our graduating seniors this year. So look forward to attending that event on Wednesday evening. And also, Capoja Education Center, they're gonna be having a little fundraiser event next week. It's called the Apex Fun Run, which will be held on the sixteenth. So look forward to the students appreciating that, activities outside for them, that should be good. And also, as I am the representative of South St. Paul to Intermediate School District nine seventeen, we are busy down there also, which is held, uh, our meetings are held on at the Roseman, Rosemont, uh, Botec School. We have, we had our regular meeting last week, and we also had our Staff Appreciation Banquet last Thursday, where they gave awards for, for, for the amount of years to, to staff members, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, up to awards for them. And I always wanna say a personal thank you to the Executive Superintendent Administrative Assistant, Linda Berg. She received her twenty-five-year anniversary award. And so she's, she's a lot of help to us board members, so we appreciate everything that, that she's done. And the other thing, on Intermediate nine seventeen, they all, we have a class from them here up at Lincoln Center. It's our Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program. And, and they are gonna be having a, a hearing play screening event. Well, it's, it's on June first with the movie Pinocchio. So I do hope to try and, and to attend that, that event on June first from, for the deaf and hardy, hard of hearing students, so thank you.
Excellent. Director Tim Felton?
I don't have much to add, other than that Superintendent Zambrino already mentioned at the high school Academic Honors Program last Friday. I was in attendance at that, nice to be there and see a lot of the kids that go to school with my children, get a lot of honors, so that was nice, nice program.
Excellent. Director Monica Weber?
Similar to others, wanna direct, um, sincere sympathy to Director Beerman's family. Um, I didn't know Director Beerman, um, for that long, but he had just a great attitude and was willing to try lots of different things. And the one meeting that I got to be the chair of, he afterwards came up and said, "You did a really good job, like, waited to step in there." Um, and so he was a very, very encouraging, um, and his, and his energy will be missed.
Director Anne Claflin?
Oh, thank you. Um, I would like to recognize Bernie Beerman's commitment to public service. My South St. Paul education is still that in me, and I'm glad to see that tradition continuing on. Um, I'd also like to call out a few of our students that I encountered in the wild in our community. Uh, they didn't know who I was, but they were wearing their South St. Paul Packers gear very proudly and just doing a wonderful job to represent our community. They were respectful, responsible young adults, um, just a great representation of our community. And finally, a quick update from the local issues meeting.